It's 7:00 and it's July the 5th. Wow, summer's almost over. Anyway. Well, with that, good news, I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Would you log in, please? Ms. Hawley?
All Councilors present, an accorum has been declared.
Thank you. We've got agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Heather, Hawley?
There's not.
Not, Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second. I've got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda approval? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Next up is citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I don't have any cards this evening, so we will move on to Consent Calendar A. Consent Calendar A allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. We have four items this evening. The May Monthly Expenditure Report, the May Financial Report, the approval of the minutes of the meeting for June 7, 2017, and the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of June 14, 2017. Mr. V. Hill?
I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
I've got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Not, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, Board/Commission Business, Board Applicant Appointments. And we have had interviews with many of our board applicants. Ms. Hawley?
Okay. So Council received notice from citizens wishing to be appointed to the various boards for the June 2017 appointment cycle and the following of their current positions for each board, along with the board members requesting reappointment and then the new applicants. So interested, new applicants and incumbent applicants were interviewed by City Council on Wednesday, May 31st, Wednesday, June 7th, and Wednesday, June 28th. So on the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, there's one position available with the term ending of June 6th of 2021. We had three new applicants for that position. The Library Board has three positions available with terms ending June 1, 2019, June 1, 2020, and June 1, 2021. We had a current member who requested reappointment and then two new applicants for that board. The Personnel Board has three positions with terms ending June 1, 2018, June 1, 2021, and June 1, 2022, and we had two new applicants for that board. Planning Commission had two positions available, one for Ward 3 and one for Ward 4, with terms ending 6-1, 2021, and 6-1, 2018, respectfully. For Ward 3, we had a current member requesting reappointment and two new applicants for that position. For Ward 4, we had two new applicants. And then the Rec Board had three positions available with terms ending 6-1, 2018, 6-1, 2021, and 6-1, 2021. We had two current members who requested reappointment and then one new applicant. Tree Board had three positions with their terms all ending June 1, 2021, and we didn't have any new applicants for that, but we had the current members request reappointment. So the way the appointments happen, Council appoints by way of a vote, so I have your ballots ready for you to vote. On these applicants, there was, David Mize applied. He's a current member on the Rec Board. He requested reappointment, but he also applied for the Planning Commission. He prefers Planning Commission, but of course it's up to you guys what you guys vote for him in. And applicants can only serve on one board, so vote only one.
Quick question, Hawley.
Yes.
Dave wants to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ward 4. Is that correct?
Yes, Ward 4. That's correct. And then there's another applicant who applied for two boards. He was a new applicant, John Adams. He applied for the Rec Board and he applied for the Planning Commission, but his is Ward 3. He also prefers Planning Commission.
Are there ballots available for this?
Yeah, I'll pass them out.
There are. There are only a few positions for which there are more applicants than there are positions open. So if you want to take up the ones that are not contested or for which you have either the same or fewer applicants than you have positions open, then you can get those out of the way. Well, I take that back because you have a vote to do on the Planning Commission, so you may want to do the Planning Commission voting one first. And then you'll have to figure out how you're going to assign the terms because there are varying lengths of terms. For instance, take a look at the Library Board. You've got three different term-ending dates, three positions, and three applicants. How are you going to assign the applicants to the terms? Are you going to vote on that? Are you just going to draw straws for it? Are you, you know, what are you going to do? You have various options there. So just from a logical perspective, the first thing you've got to do is vote on the Planning Commission. And that one is easy because those terms are fixed. It looks like. One of them ends in 2021 and the other in 2018. And that'll tell you who's available for the Rec Board or whatever the other one was. Then you maybe need to figure out how you're going to... Is that the only contested one? No, the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee needs a vote as well.
I did one for each one.
So unless you want to... I guess the most logical way to do it would be to vote on those two and then take up the uncontested ones unless there's some voting that needs to be done there. If there's any positions that you don't, if there are any applicants that you don't think are a good fit for those boards, even though there's a slot for them, you may not want to appoint them. So you can't necessarily just approve everybody.
Correct. So are these paper ballots? Thank you. Shall we do the Planning Commission first? Ms. Hawley, is that what you have in mind or did you want to just start with H-PAC? Why don't we do with the Planning Commission first? Is that possible?
Sure it is.
Thank you.
We have two ballots, one's for Ward 3, one's for Ward 4.
Okay.
Make sure to put your name on it.
Did you want them? Does it make any difference to you?
Mayor, did you have two Planning Commission ones or...? I think we had a Rec Board and a...
What do you want to do next?
Rec Board.
Rec Board?
Yeah, we can do Rec Board while you're counting. No?
No, we can say people on that one.
That was a good idea, Charlie.
My understanding is depending on how David Mize comes out on Planning Commission impacts your vote for Rec Board.
Okay, thank you. Recreational Board, David Mize. He's a good member there.
He voted for two. Okay. for Chris Lopez of five, total votes of, total votes for John Adams of two, and then zero for, who was the other one? Zero for Debbie Clark. So Christopher Lopez is, who has the most votes for Planning Commission, for Ward 3. For Ward 4... Okay, so Michael Carson had two votes, three votes. David Mize had three votes, four votes, sorry. And then nobody chose none of the above, so David Mize has the most votes for that one, for Ward 4. Yes. Okay, so our next one, we will do Historic Preservation. Okay. For the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, the applicants were Scott White, Michelle Stone, and Mary Ann Talbot. Scott White had four votes, Michelle Stone had two, and Mary Ann had one. So Scott White is the one with the most votes.
Thank you, Hawley.
Okay, so your next one is going to be Rec Board. You have, since David Mize, when you do a resolution after all this voting, David Mize will be appointed to the Planning Commission. He's not available for the Rec Board, so you have two applicants. Don't vote for David Mize. You have two applicants for three positions available. You have two different terms, one ending in 2021 and the other ending in 2018. The question is, how do you pick between the two applicants as to which term? My suggestion to you would be to use the numbers 1 and 2 by the applicants in terms of who your preferable choice is, and that person would get the longest term. So when the ballots come back, the person with the lowest number would get the 2021 term, and the person with the higher number would get the 2018 term.
Well, there's two for 2021. There's two for 2021. So can we just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll use this nifty thing on a different one. You're right, there's two for 2021, so this one, ignore that. They'll both be 2021.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Vote for two or for none of the above.
Except for Dave Mize. You don't vote for Dave Mize.
Don't vote for Dave Mize.
Because he's already been appointed to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so for the Rec Board, John Adams and Paul Duarte had seven votes each, so they'll both be appointed.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. What's next? Tree Board?
Let's use the, oops.
Let's use the nifty method and do the Library Board next. So you have three applicants for three positions, each of them with a different term. If you use a 1, 2, and 3 in your order of what you think is the strength, then the person with the lowest number, total number, will be the longest term and on through to the opposite way, with the highest total number is the shortest term. Just rank your votes, 1, 2, and 3, 1 being your top pick, and that person who is the most top picks of the group will end up with the longest term.
Mr. Coleman is next.
Okay. It's a little difficult to remember.
Eric?
While Hawley is dealing with the complicated stuff, I will hand out your Tree Board ballot. These terms all end on 2021. You have two applicants for three spots.
This is really complex.
Okay, so that's 5.
Position 2, actually 4.
This person, so this person, I would say this person has a total number of 5 plus 6, so the total number is 11. Just right, yeah. Three times 2. And this is 3 plus 4 times 2 is 8. 8 times 12 is 18. Just see that body language. And this leaves 3 times 1, 2, 4, 12, plus 6 is 18. So this person has the lowest number, so she gets the longest term, or second term, shortest term.
Shortest term. Longest term? Okay, so for Library Board, Mary Walsh had... The lowest? Number?
Yeah, lowest total number, so she gets the longest term.
Okay, so she had the lowest total number, so she gets the longest term. So Mary Walsh is going to get the position ending in 2021. Amanda Willner was next, so she'll get the term ending in 2020. And then Michelle Romero will get the term ending 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. And who's next?
All right, and Tree Board, Adam Moore and Marilyn Lozer both had seven votes total each, so they'll both be appointed into their seats again.
Thank you.
And then we have Personnel Board.
Personnel Board.
Okay, and our next one is going to be Personnel Board.
Personnel Board.
And Personnel Board, again, it's the 1, 2, 3, except with this one, it's only 1, 2 because there are only two applicants for three spots.
But there are three term-ending dates. Do we signify which term we want them to fill?
My proposal would be you just do the 1 and 2, and the longest, the top vote gets the longest one, the next one gets the second one, and your open term is the shortest one.
Okay. So for Personnel Board, Kendra Lambert had a total votes of, well, seven, but then her total score was nine, and Amanda Hill had 12. So Kendra Lambert will get the longer term, and then Amanda Hill will get the second longest term.
Thank you, Hawley.
Thank you, Holly. Is that it?
So that's all the ones you have to vote on. Now you have to do your appointments into the seats.
Ms. Daniels?
Mayor, I move that we appoint everyone that was just voted on by council. And my understanding is Holly will read those lists to us, but I move that we approve everyone we already voted on.
Second.
I've got a motion to seconds. Is there any further discussion on the appointment process? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Holly, would you please contact all the new appointees, congratulate them on behalf of council, and thank them for their willingness to serve on these boards?
I will, and I will. I'll read the appointments now, just so you can have an idea of who got appointed into which seat.
Thank you.
So for historic preservation, Scott White is the person who was appointed. His term will end June 1st, 2021. Planning Commission, Christopher Lopez is the person appointed into Ward Three's position, and his term will end 2021 as well. For Planning Commission, Ward Four, David Mize was appointed, and his term will end, Ward Four, in 2018. Recreation Board, John Adams and Paul Duarte. Their terms, they're both, they both are reappointed into their seats, and their terms will end 2021. See, library board, the three positions that were available, all the current members reappointed, and then the new applicants were appointed into their seats. Mary Walsh will have the longest term with her term ending 2021. Amanda Willner will have the second term ending 2020, and then Michelle Romero will have her term ending 2019. And on tree board, the current members sitting there who requested a reappointment will be reappointed into their seats, and their terms both end 2021. And then personnel board, the two new applicants, their terms are going to end. For Kendra Lambert, her term will end 2022, and Amanda Hills will end 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Mayor, one comment too. You said to contact the people that were appointed. Also, can you contact the people that weren't appointed, and maybe in the future, if some openings come up, so they can reapply?
Appreciate that, Councilor Gregor. Thank you. Please do that for us. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So there's obviously still a couple of openings. Can people still do it, or do they have to wait till next year?
No. So any opening that's available, they can request to be appointed into those seats, and then we can bring it before you guys at a different meeting.
Okay, awesome. That'd be great. Thank you.
Will that take new interviews, or since we've interviewed them?
If you've interviewed them at this round, and they want to be seated into one, it's up to you if you want to re-interview them, or you can just do an appointment.
Thank you, Holly. We'll move on to business brought forward by city staff. Public Works Department, we have three items this evening. Mr. Teinberg, thank you for being here, sir. We have a public hearing, a couple of first readings.
Thank you, sir. Yes, a public hearing, a couple of first readings. This is odd. I think in my seven years at the city, I've been a part of two alley vacations, and tonight we have three of them. So I don't know if we've had a sale on alley vacations, or what's going on. But this one is your public hearing. You've seen this before, but just to remind you that during the numerous replats and subdivisions of the old Safeway site where Sonic is now, one half of a landlocked and unused alley was apparently overlooked when the other alleys associated with it were vacated. This alley is landlocked, and that the public has no legal access to it from any direction. It contains no utilities or other improvements, and is effectively preventing the consolidation of two separately owned parcels required for the development of the new Starbucks. This is simply a housekeeping effort that will allow the site to be used in the most effective manner and expedite the processing of the land use applications submitted by Starbucks.
Thank you, Pat. So with that, I will open the public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 15-2017, the Alley Vacation Block One Calbreth's addition. Counsel? You have any questions of Pat? Comments? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you.
Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll open the public hearing. On ordinance number 15-2017. I thought I did. I didn't?
You did, but you didn't invite anybody to speak. So if somebody was jumping at the gun, they may not have realized that this was their opportunity.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak on this? Ruth? Then I'll close the public hearing. Sorry, counsel. I got carried away with that one. Close the public hearing and bring it to counsel for further discussion or decision. Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number 15-2017, Alley Vacation Block One Calbreth's addition.
I second.
I've got a motion to seconds. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the first reading on ordinance number 16-2017, Partial Alley Vacation Block Two Ten, Washington Edition, City of Alamosa. Pat?
Thank you, sir. Again, this is, this is an alley, the west half of this block, Block Two Ten in the Washington Edition is almost a quarter of a mile long. And the west half of that alley was vacated in 2011 to accommodate development in that west half. There's been several attempts to vacate the eastern part of this alley in the past, but if you remember, this was one of your most recent annexations. I couldn't vacate the alley while it was in the county, and the county had no interest in vacating it. They didn't deny it, but they weren't aggressive about getting it vacated. So it sat for a while. Now that it's been annexed, and in the city, we have a developer with plans on the south side, which is right across the street from the elementary school, and they have requested once again to get this vacated. So I'm recommending that you do vacate it while maintaining an easement for any existing public utilities. There's a power line running down there. There are no city services in the alley.
Thank you, Pat. That land's been vacant for a while, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Councilor V. Hill?
If there's no further questions or comments, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 16-2017, vacating the alley lying west of the Westernmost boundary of lots 39 and 44 and Block Two Ten, Washington Edition, City of Alamosa, and set it for a public hearing on July 19th or soon thereafter.
Second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number 16-2017? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the first reading, ordinance number 17-2017, Alley Vacation Block Five, Alamosa Edition, City of Alamosa. Pat?
Thank you, sir. This alley, although platted as such, has not been improved or used as an alley for a very long time, if ever. This is one of the few blocks in the city that has three individual connecting alleys in the shape of an H, and this vacation request is for the middle leg of this alley system. You can see in the picture, the yellow hatched area is the alley that we're requesting vacation for. Currently, and for quite some time, the alley's been encroached upon by trees, mature landscaping fences, and private occupation. It contains no apparent public utilities, and has no signs of recent use. The petitioners are hoping the vacation and consolidation of the alley into their private property will alleviate some of the graffiti issues they're having, and some of the hijinks in the area. And again, there's no utilities in it. And if you look at the picture, it's kind of hard to tell. I should have taken you a picture at ground level to look at. But the big tree you see on the west end of the alley, north is up, on the west end over there, that trunk is probably close to four feet in diameter, and it's sticking well into the alley. And then over towards the east, that big line of trees, those are poplar trees that are probably 35 feet tall and two feet in diameter that are growing in the alley. So it's been quite some time since anybody's used it as an alley. We don't need it for emergency services or solid waste.
Thank you, Pat. Got a motion to seconds, or any further discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Move on to finance. We've got a couple of items in finance this evening. Resolution number 16-2017, amending ordinance 17-2016 for the 2017 budget, also known as the second budget amendment, as well as the approval of the community bank's bid for multi-purpose facility leasing purchase funding. Ms. Judy?
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. This amendment, or the resolution, is to make some appropriations that weren't accounted for in the original budget, partly because they weren't in the periphery at the time, and partly they were things that were budgeted in '16 that weren't spent that we needed to get, and so we purchased them in '17. The first item is in the general fund. These are additional revenues that we're getting. Excuse me. There are two, we are the fiscal agent for two pass-through grants, one for the Sandless Valley Health, which is for the new oncology wing, and the other one is for the JAG grant, which goes to, I just want to blank, it's for reparation.
Center for Restorative Justice?
Center for, yeah, that's it. Center for Restorative Justice. The other one is the USDA grant that we received for purchase fire radios for the fire department. And then the other one is SID reimbursements, is for the SID projects that you did, that the property owners reimbursed the city, to make the loan payments that was borrowed for that project. And then we did have one taxpayer that paid off their whole amount, and so we took that money and applied it against the loan. Okay, and then we'll move on to the general fund expenditures. There's a $25,000 increase in that, in the fire operation, is that's for the radios that were purchased. $10,000 came from the USDA grant, and $15,000 from reserves for radios. In the municipal court, that $68,010 is for that JAG grant. And then the court now uses a policeman to do the security rather than a bailiff, and so that $5,500 is the increase in personnel costs for that. But we'd also like to reclass $4,200 from the contract line item for bailiff up to that personnel amount, so the net difference is like $1,300. And it's my understanding that the court is happy with the arrangement, too. It's working out well. On the, in the IT department, we would like $9,500 for the Wi-Fi that they put in Cole Park, and that'll be used for the Early Iron, and for when the Ride the Rockies and other events that are held in Cole Park. $1,500 of that comes from money that is donated or contributed by the Early Iron Festival last year and this year. And they were, originally it was for cameras, but they said the Wi-Fi would work, too, so they were okay if we used it for that. And $800 comes from the police department, because of the IT purchase batteries for their patrol cars for the electronics in there. And then $6,000 would need to come from fund balance, which is available. And the finance department, we have an $8,000 expense that wasn't budgeted for, for the outside accountant who reviews my financial statements prior to being submitted to you, just as a second pair of eyes, or a third or fourth set of eyes that reviews things and asks questions to make sure everything looks correct. There's, in the non-departmental, there's $500,000 is where I located the pass-through grant for the hospital. And although, they'll do all the bookkeeping and accounting, we're just the fiscal agent for that. And then the $7,800 is the SID. $5,300 of it is the loan payment, and then the balance is the amount that the taxpayer paid in advance, which is about $2,400. The decrease in the police budget is the $800 that was transferred to IT for the purchase of the batteries. And that was just to put off, I think they purchased the batteries in order to prolong the life of the equipment instead of repurchasing everything. They were able to get another year or two out of it by just buying the batteries. And the $4,100 in the street maintenances for the purchase of a tool truck that was budgeted in 2016, but the truck wasn't purchased until this year. And the enterprise fund, water department, the increase is for interest on the water projects for the CLP that we issued this year for the augmentation plan, and then for other water project that you deem, water project that you deem would be acceptable if we didn't need it all for augmentation. There's also... I can't read my writing. $50,000 for the augmentation plan, additional expenses. Most of those are the broker's fees for the transactions. And then the $169,500 transferred to the sewer department. It was just, I think it was just a miscommunication on the budget. It should have gone into sewer, because it was for sewer improvements. If you look at the budget, it says SS, and it has the addresses. So, and the sewer department, that's $169,500, it's just moved to there. The 242, 641, and sanitation is for the sanitation truck that was budgeted in 2016 and purchased this year. And the employee benefit fund, this is the first year that the dental insurance has been stated separately, and there wasn't a line item, or the line item to account for it didn't include, was understated. So I just took the years, the first month's worth, and multiplied by 12, and that's where I came up with the $56,000. But part of that money is also paid by the city employees kicking part of that, 24% of that expense. In the Parks and Rec Department, it's the increase in loan proceeds for the multipurpose building, because the original budget was less. And then in the Parks and Rec Department expense, it's the increase in the cost of the multipurpose building that was approved by you. So, do you have any other questions?
Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you can answer this, maybe Heather can. You talked about the Wi-Fi at the park. Was that, has that already been done?
Yes, we were able to get those done before the events.
Okay, and is that stuff promoted to people? They know, there's signage, and stuff like that?
We promoted it during the events. We haven't really done any promotion outside of that yet, so that's something we can still look at doing.
Thank you.
That'd be a good idea. Councilor V. Hill, put signs out there, Wi-Fi available, and is there like a code or something like that? That probably wouldn't want, nothing, just available. Thank you, Ace. Appreciate that. The question I had, specific to the $8,000, was that for the services to Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you very much there. Any other questions? Councilor V. Hill?
If there's no other questions, then I move that we approve resolution number 16-2017, amending ordinance 17-2016 for the 2017 budget, also known as the second budget amendment.
I second.
I've got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion on resolution number 20-17? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of community banks' bid for the multipurpose facility lease purchase funding. Ms. Judy?
We sent out bids to, excuse me, I had an email chain for all of the banks, local banks, and I got responses from all but one. And if you look and see on your paperwork, we got a really good bid from community banks to end... We sent out bids to, excuse me, I had an email chain for all of the banks, local banks, and I got responses from all but one. And if you look and see your, on your paperwork, we got a really good bid from community banks through MBH Bank, and they, their bid is actually lower than any bids that we got, or offers that we got on the COP that we did for the water projects funding. But they're, have so far been really good to work with, and I believe that would be the best. It's considerable savings for the city.
I think from the information, the difference between community banks and the next lowest bidder is a difference of 174,427.
Thank you, Heather. That's quite a savings.
Yes.
And Counselor Greg, I'm sure is excited about this.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for putting it out to the, the banks here in the community and allowing them to, this is, this is a good, a good bid here, so thank you very much.
And the, the cost for it was considerably less as well. Does anyone have any?
Counsel, Councilor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move that we approve community banks, the, the community banks bid for the multipurpose facility lease purchasing, purchase funding.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on approval of community banks for the multipurpose facility. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. We'll move on to police. Now, we have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number fourteen dash twenty seventeen, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado Department of Higher Education by and through the State Board of Community Colleges and Occupational Education for the use and benefit of Trinidad State Junior College to provide security services for the Trinidad State Alamosa campus from the Alamosa Police Department. Chief, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Actually, I believe the city manager's going to address this.
So, thank you, Mayor. This is the third time, this has been before counsel, so you should be fairly well-versed, but from a public perception. The chief has been working, working closely with TSJC for almost a year, probably, at this point, from when they first approached the chief to look at this type of arrangement. I think they first did it at their Trinidad campus and saw some pretty good results in regards to the type of security services, plus the coordination that would occur between the city's emergency response and what their emergency response was. It was something that we wanted to make sure from a city perspective, we weren't taking something on without proper compensation, and so the chief has spent a lot of time making sure every cost there would be to the city, from training to equipment to the vehicle, was all covered in this contract. The only thing that's changed from your first reading to this wording, to this reading, is that we did make some minor changes to try to make sure that we can appropriately adjust the payments for either party based on situations that might be out of the control of either party. So, for example, if we have turnover in this position, we may need to hire someone and put them through all that training again, which means we would want TSJC to pay a higher amount than what they maybe would have anticipated. Conversely, we put in here an anticipated 4% increase, but if that person only gets a 3.25, we obviously don't need TSJC to pay that extra 75%. So those, we put some language in there that makes it clear that they're only reimbursing us for direct costs, and that there might be some fluctuations within that. That's the only change between your first and second reading. Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything?
I think you covered it good, Heather. I mean, the partnership that we have with Trinidad State already is, is strong, and I believe this will strengthen it even more to include the emergency response like the city manager indicated.
Thank you, Chief. Now, they are training officers either here or in Trinidad, or are they doing that anymore?
We still have the police academy here that's run through Trinidad State Junior College, and that's one of the partnerships that we do have.
Thank you, Chief.
And we're very grateful because I think it's our chief's leadership that is kind of keeping that going, so thank you to our chief for that.
Oh, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number fourteen dash twenty seventeen, and I will ask anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against this ordinance, please step forward to the podium, make your wishes known. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number fourteen, twenty seventeen, and bring it back to counsel for a decision or further discussion. Councilor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty seventeen.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number fourteen dash twenty seventeen? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to parks and recreation. We have resolution fifteen dash twenty seventeen to act as the fiscal agent for the Alamosa Rio Recreation Inspires Opportunity Coalition for the grant application for the Tier Two Inspire Initiative Implementation Grant from the State Board of Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund. Thank you, Andy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Well, you guys might remember in last year, we applied as part of the San Luis Valley Inspire Initiative, and we weren't funded, but GOCO encouraged us to come back and apply just as Alamosa, so this is kind of the, the offshoot of that, just to be the fiscal agent. But we've, just as the Alamosa hub now, we're pursuing things for Alamosa that I'll talk to you about in a minute. But, so this, this resolution to be the fiscal agent for the Alamosa hub, we're, we're pursuing underpasses, connectivity of our ranch to Refuge Trail, and outdoor recreation programs, some of the stuff we had in the last go-around, but now it's just Alamosa. So, we're excited. The whole idea is to get kids outside. If you have any questions, go ahead.
Thank you, Andy. I, I do have a question. That's going to clean, clean out part of that under the bridge area where we have a lot of transients and things like that going on, isn't it?
Well, if, if it came to fruition, yes. I mean, it's a key piece when we look long-term at connectivity from the, the ranch and even further north to the refuge. But just right now, we don't have a very safe crossing, and we see people every day crossing there, and many user groups, from the ASU runners to regular community residents are trying to cross there, so it, it's, though it might not directly sound like getting kids outside, when we talk about increasing trails on the ranch, and there's a lot of information on this in the background, and I'm sorry if I'm skipping over a lot of it, but I don't want to take a lot of your time. So connectivity and increasing trail access and safety is, is all part of that, and I mean, that would be a huge, huge plus for our community if we can get it to go through.
The other part of it, too, to make sure we're clear on is, as part of the application, we have to do a 175 and 50% budget, is that correct, Andy?
Yes.
And so those underpasses are at the 100%, but should we get dropped down to 75 and 50, they start getting knocked off, so it's important to make that clear as well.
Yeah, because those are such expensive capital projects, but if, even if we could just get one done at 75% funding, that'd be-
That'd be great. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Andy. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Andy, according to the, the proposed budget, you have some monies going to BG CSLV Friends Park and Smith Reservoir. Can you comment on that? What is that?
Yes, that's kind of a unique situation because the Boys and Girls Club, under a previous GOCO grant, has given control of Friends Park to the city. So some of the proposed improvements, which are, which are nice and a heavily-used park, would require a new agreement for that, for that property to become under city control for at least 25 years. So he's looking to get more outdoor activities there from, let's see, like climbing wall, natural playground, fitness area, stuff like that. But we are having to work on some legal requirements to make sure that's, that is city property, because GOCO will only fund through the city. Heather?
And what about Smith Reservoir?
So that's property that the Boys and Girls Club owns in Costia County and has nothing to do with us, but again, being a fiscal agent, we would, we would see money coming through for improvements to there. It's like an outdoor camp for the Boys and Girls Club.
So, so the project as fiscal agent is, is more than just city-owned property improvements. And so from a city-owned perspective, there's going to be improvements along the, the dike system in regards to the underpasses, there's going to be trail enhancements, some wayfinding improvements, and, and growth of trails in some other areas. The Boys and Girls Club is to really enhance that outdoor area by the Boys and Girls Club. In addition to, for a camping perspective, is that other piece of property that Andy was, was just talking about, and so it's to make improvements there to where they can actually take outdoor excursions, maybe overnight trips, those types of things. I think there's also, Andy, what other parts of the project, are there other projects? Is there some on the farm park?
There's some on the farm park, and an organization called Rig Wiki does water conservation and education. There's five or six kind of entities now in our Alamosa group, and frankly, it'll be a lot easier to coalesce a local coalition, and from a fiscal agent perspective, it's obviously going to be easier and not as tedious tracking expenditures and stuff like that being that it's an Alamosa coalition.
Thank you, Andy. Wow, and we're looking at hopefully garnering possibly up to maybe $3 million for that, hopefully?
I think it's, yeah, about 2.3 on the GOCO ask, but project cost is up around what you said.
That would sure be welcome in the pipeline to make, you know, connectivity and a safety factor for levies, and that would be great. All right, Counselor Hill?
Andy, thank you for doing all this. I move that we approve, excuse me, that we adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty seventeen to act as the fiscal agent for the Alamosa Rio Coalition for the grant application for the Tier Two Inspire Initiative Implementation Grant from the State Board of GOCO Trust Fund.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on resolution number fifteen, twenty seventeen? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. And so we will move on to the fire department. Chief, it's good to have you here. We have a first reading on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty seventeen, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa County Fire District Protection District to provide fire protection services for the south half of the Alamosa County Fire Protection District. Thank you for being here, Chief.
Mayor, Counsel, thank you. Give you a little historical background. We did some research, and we couldn't find where there were any written agreements between the city and the fire district on how the department operated outside of just the use of the facilities. So this document is fairly simple, but it covers the personnel, the use of apparatus, purchasing equipment, also if there is an opportunity to co-own or jointly fund a truck or something like that, how that agreement would be functioning. So it's basically just a simple document to create that, so there's some sort of a written history going on here. Because right now, what we've been doing is a lot of memory, what I have in my head and a couple of the older board members, so the fire district has already signed off on this agreement, so they are in approval of it, so open for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of jazzed about this topic. I went, at CML, there was a breakout session about fire districts and growth with cities. So I have, I have, I have a lot of background, but I have questions for you, Chief, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Our fire district, what, what does it cover?
Actually, the way the district is set up, it, it covers almost the entire Alamosa County. There is a slight little corner up in the northwest area, and then down in the southwest area of the corner of this county that are not covered by the Alamosa County Fire Protection District. Our operation has been responsible for what we call the south half of the district, which basically, in Mosca Hooper, takes care of the north end. It's jointly, it's all funded out of the same account and board management. So we, the dividing line is the Stanley Road, so historically, everything from the Stanley Road south to the Canas County line, east to the Costia County line, west to the Rio Grande County line, has been operated out of the Alamosa facilities. And going back on some of the scrapbooks and historical stuff that we have within the department, this has been ongoing since the late 40s, and then the district was formed in 56, I believe, but we couldn't ever find where they sat down and said, okay, you're going to be hired, and people will cover our employment costs, that kind of thing. Of course, back then, most everything's done by a shake of hands versus now, you got to have it in writing, so.
And this is probably nothing to do with, with this agenda item, but at that CML breakout session, I was, I was there, and all these people were from Bailey and Conifer towns in the woods, but it, that, that session didn't go down that path. It was more of when cities and towns start to grow, and all this new development comes in, does the, do we have agreements, or does the fire district have agreements with the new developments and these new, and these new developers, that some of the, some of that money and those costs go to you as the fire district because you're getting more houses to take care of?
Yeah, as far as development fees and that kind of thing. The district doesn't have anything in place at this point. And of course, a lot of the property that gets developed, people want to be tied into the city and water and sewer, so they go through the annex process, which takes it off of the fire district's roles, which takes that property into coverage under the city operational side, so.
Do you think it'd be a good idea if, if you had some language in place to, to help with that? Because that's more money for you.
You know, the fire district realistically probably should look at it, but the board tries to run a pretty conservative operation without the belief that, you know, unless they're in dire need of money, they won't ask for it from the taxpayers, so. But down the road, as things keep developing around here, if it's property outside of the city, it's something they're going to have to look at, I think. Because I know they are doing it in other areas, especially down on the four corners and stuff. They're, you know, came up with impact fees that go specifically for funding fire operations or police operations or whatever.
Thanks, Chief.
You bet.
Thank you, Chief. You were talking about CML. Well, they're, they have a big fire room in Breckenridge going right now.
Yes, they do.
Better than a hundred and some acres going. It's amazing. But, yeah, these, I think these MOUs are so important. Leaving it to memory sometimes doesn't work.
No, it doesn't, especially the more gray hair they get, so.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Counselor Greg?
If there's no further questions, I move that we pass ordinance number eighteen, 2017, on first reading, set it for a public hearing on July nineteenth at seven o'clock or sooner after.
Counselor Hill?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty seventeen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the city manager, Legal. We have a discussion regarding council compensation specific to our, well, I guess you'd call him a stipend. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Probably over the last three, four years, this is a topic that has been raised by council over those years. City staff has conducted surveys of what we have considered comparable communities. We've also added some communities at the request of council into that. The latest survey, which was attached to the council communication, was conducted in 2016. A summary of that is included in your council communication in regards to, depending on how you want to look at the comparison, you can look at either the average or the median in regards to the average. The average council member in the comparable communities gets paid 383 compared to Alamosa at 400. The mayor's 514 for comparable communities and 600 for Alamosa. The median has council members for comparable communities getting 232 and 400 compared again to 400 for Alamosa. The mayor at 400 for comparable communities and 600 for Alamosa. The timing of this is that councils indicated that they wanted to make sure to discuss this topic in a regular public meeting, to make sure that it's as transparent as possible for the public, and so we wanted to get this before you in a timely manner that should you choose to put something before the voters in November, we can get that language drafted, and you can have that information as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Holly. If, if we were to put this question on the ballot, would it cost any more money than we already have? have set aside for the election this year?
No.
Thank you.
And I did forget, because I think we had some questions come in since this agenda was posted. One of them was to find out, when was the last time that there was an increase? And so, I think a copy of that resolution was placed where you were sitting, and so that would have been 1998. The other question that came in following that, give me one second real fast, was if we were to look at a CPI based on when the last increase was until nine, or to now, what would that look like? Just give me one second.
Does that mean cost of living, Heather?
It's a, go ahead, Eric.
Consumer Price Index, so it's a measure of the cost of living increase. And what we did, Heather's finding it, but what we did was look at the Denver Boulder CPI numbers, because that's the index that's used when Tabor makes adjustments to its various limitations it references. I think it's actually the Denver Boulder, Fort Collins, Greeley CPI index numbers.
So, for that timeframe, it looks like the CPI was approximately 2.772. And so, if you apply that to the 4,800 in 1998, and what it would be now if we were to use that, it would be 7,684.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Gregel.
Tell me again, Heather. I don't understand what you're saying there on the CPI.
I think, I think what prompted the question is this concept of this is just locked in, and there's nothing that, you know, the cost of living increases, the cost of doing business, all of that kind of stuff. So, when you have this locked-in number, should there be some kind of accounting of these other costs going up? So, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, especially the one focused in on the Denver Boulder area for Tabor purposes, is kind of what we use to multiply what that number was in 1998. If you would have been using some sort of multiplier, like the CPI, that's what it would be now.
And what was that percentage?
2.772.
Thank you.
I'd like to make some comments if I can, Mayor.
Yes. Counselor Gregel?
I want to thank staff for putting all this stuff together, what other communities they're getting and stuff. We have been talking about this, like you said, for about maybe three to four years. And if you really look at when's the last time we really had an increase, it's been about, close to about 20 years then. And it, you know, I know we're not here for the money, you know, and some of the counselors have expressed that very strongly, that we're not here for the money. But by the same token, it takes a lot to do this job, and a couple of extra dollars, you know, to pay for this and that, it comes in handy, you know? And I've been here the longest, and I was, I remember when we were getting $50 a month. So, and through the years, counselors have come through, and, 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 you know, it's a subject, a little tough subject, where, where people, you know, like you say, we're not here for the money. And I think that it's 20 years is already a little too long to maybe, maybe go ahead and ask the voters out there for a little increase. You know, I think what we first need to do is to see if, on council, if we have enough votes to even go ahead, go ahead with it, you know, to put it on the ballot, and then maybe discuss whether, what kind of compensation, if we, if it does pass from council, on what we were looking at.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Gregel, the length of time it's been since a council increase. I think the challenge that I honestly have is that we are already, compared to similar cities and towns our size and what we do, I feel like maybe the increase in 1997 was probably put us way higher than everybody in 1997. And we're comparable now and even a little bit better than other communities our size. And so, I do feel like our compensation is fair. I feel like we give time and energy to this job, and it is, it is very much a job, but it was one that we went into knowingly to serve the public. And so, I believe our compensation is fair. That's my personal opinion. And I think that we are paid reasonably for the size of the community and the time that it takes us to do this job every month.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley.
So, another thing I would add, too, in talking to different councils from different communities, we also have a great benefit in the sense of when we go to CML conferences and all the different CML events, anything that we go to, we get compensated for our mileage, we get compensated for our stays, we get the per diem. And what's really nice about that is we are able to have a really strong presence at these different events, and Alamosa really stands strong. But it's because that's part of a benefit that we have, and I know I gain a lot when I go to these conferences, so I'm very thankful and appreciative of being able to do that. But here again, I do think that doesn't show up on this report, is how many communities they have to pay for that themselves, hence why you usually only have one or two, if any, showing up, because that's something they have to take out of their own pocket. So, for me, I look at that as an additional benefit I didn't even realize till I got on council.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Personally, you know, this is an item that I really believe that the citizens of our community need to weigh in on. 20 years without a stipend increase is probably a long time for folks to, to have to, in a sense, go without a stipend increase. I know fuel costs have gone up, and we don't get paid for everything we do here. I know, for instance, that fuel costs have gone up since 1997, '98, and I don't get compensated, and neither does anyone here, to go back and forth. And I mean, let's face it, this summer, we have had a lot of meetings, and not to say that that's a lot of fuel, but that's a lot of time as well. And so, it's not only the increase in cost, but the time commitment that many of us have to, and we do it willingly, definitely. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to ask the voters for a stipend increase. If they're willing to give us a stipend increase, wonderful, and if they're not, that's just fine as well. But it's the voters that basically will make the decision for us. And so, that's my position there. Counselor Gregel.
What I'd like to do tonight, just to either put this to rest or move it forward, is maybe ask, and I don't know if, would Eric, would a motion to see if this we could go forward? Was it too early, or what process? So, we find out whether we move forward or just drop the whole discussion?
Yeah, I think a motion to direct staff to come up with language to present to the voters at the ballot for an increase would be a good motion, and I don't know, as of today, that you need to figure out the numbers. I think you need to figure out whether you've got council support for moving ahead with the question at all. And if you do, then great, and if you don't, then great. But that, I think you're right, Counselor. That's the deciding point tonight. It would be good to know that.
Very good.
If that's the case, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
You want to make a motion to find out if there is enough?
No, to give a direction to staff, just as the counselor pointed out, to give direction to the staff to put together some wording for the question, for the voter.
Is there, if you're a second? I've got a motion. Counselor Stefano?
I second the motion of Mr. Gregel.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on allowing staff to put the wording together for this? Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the compensation, compensation information that was provided by staff on several occasions, I feel like council person, Councilwoman Daniels, I feel like staff is adequately compensated. Also, I feel like council person, Hensley, that with the added benefits of us going to these retreats and things like that, I think we have great benefits. Unlike Mayor Lucero, I am not willing to ask the taxpayers for a pay raise. I know that Mayor Lucero and some of the council members have been really pushing hard for this pay raise over the past three years. I really think that we are adequately compensated compared to all of the municipalities in our size, and I would much rather see any pay raise that council members are asking for go towards funding the filling of the potholes in our city rather than filling the pockets of our politicians on council.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. So, I've got a motion and a second. Oh, Counselor Stefano?
I just wanted to make a statement or a comment to Mrs. Hensley, her comment. As a business owner, I understand this isn't all about money, but as a business owner, yeah, we get compensated to go, and it's an honor to go to CML, to learn more about our city, how to run our city. I have employees that I have to shut down my business for four days that I'm up there. So, it costs me a lot of money, and I'm not saying it's the city's fault or anybody's fault. I'm just saying for me personally, when I, when I go to CML, I have to shut down my business for four days. I don't know if Ms. Hensley gets compensated by her job to go to these or gets allowed to go, or I don't know how it works, vacation or whatever to go. But I'm just saying for myself, it costs me money out of my pocket to go, and I'm not complaining. It's an honor to go, but I'm just making that comment.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Mayor?
Yes. Counselor B. Hill?
You bet. If this test goes through, I would, I would recommend to council that we ask staff for whatever language might be on that ballot, that it's not a crazy increase, because if history is correct, I think council, 10, 15 years ago, tried to get a raise, and they tried to go up to $1,000 or something like that. I think that's crazy, so just throwing that out there.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. So, we can start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried 4 to 3 with counselors Daniel, Hensley, and Coleman casting the no votes.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. And so, staff has a direction to begin the wording, and do you want a, do you want a discussion specific to the amount of increase, or?
Well, I think that would be appropriate at the next meeting. I mean, you could do it tonight if you wanted, certainly, but the wording is very simple. It's going to look similar to the wording in Resolution 14-1997. It'll just have blanks for, for the numbers. The other, but the other issue that you had had in front of you that we didn't deal with tonight, and maybe you need to discuss some tonight, is whether you would like to see absolute numbers or numbers that tie to CPI index or some other measure of continued increase, or whether you just want to go through this every 20 years.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I've kind of rolled this around in my mind as well, but I really believe that, you know, a straight, a straight number would probably be best, a moderate increase, not an exorbitant increase, I think would be fair to ask for. And I was, in a sense, thinking possibly a $200 increase for council people, and maybe a $200 or $300 increase for the mayor. That would be my recommendation, but it would be up to council to vote on that as well. Ideas?
Is that something that we need to come up with tonight? You said, Eric, or not?
No, you don't need to come up with it tonight. We can bring some ideas before you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. That would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think we can go with that. And so, that takes care of that. We will move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? No committee reports. We'll move on to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not necessarily have a lot tonight. Just to let council know that staff is going to be extra busy these next few months, we are beginning both the CIP process and the budgeting process. So, within departments, they're going to be looking at a lot of different projects, priorities, numbers, those types of things. And so, there's going to be a lot of work going on behind the scenes to get a document that we can present to city council for consideration. The other item is if you have not been out towards the cemetery, I think you'll be surprised because that building is coming along very, very fast. So, it's exciting to see that happen and to see the benefit that we're going to be bringing to the community, especially for the outdoor restrooms and those that need to conduct business out there, it'll be a much better environment for residents to use from a city facility perspective. Lastly, it's a little bit more of an FYI, but I think a lot of times in a small community, you can get rumors that are kind of circulating. We are hearing a lot from business owners and a lot of downtown businesses as well, concerns about potentially the motorway being given to a group in the community, the Early Iron Group. We don't necessarily have privy to all the facts and discussions that have gone on, and so this is something I'm trying to be very careful about. But some of the information is that potentially the marketing board has voted to present the motorway building to the Early Iron. I think the concern that is out in the community was, was this advertised either to be for sale or that they were looking at donating it? Was it an open and transparent process? Those type of concerns are floating around. I've had two meetings, at least today, along with multiple conversations with others, to where I think it's this process that's creating the concern, because it's public funds that were used to purchase it. It's public funds, it's a public asset, and making sure that we're not giving the competitive advantage to one group of people over others that have made investment in our community and trying to decide if they want to make continued investments. The impression that we've been given is that the county commissioners still need to weigh in on this, and that's yet to happen. What we are telling people is that they should probably contact the county administrator, G.G. Dennis, if they have these concerns, to express that, to make sure it's getting to the right people. I've tried to make it clear that the city does not play a role in this, but clearly, when I'm hearing from our business owners and if they feel that, you know, their interest in making investment in our city is hindered by this, then it does make a little bit more of a connection to us as a city. So, just trying to make sure that everyone's aware of who they need to talk to and making sure council's aware of this as well, in case someone asks you about it out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. I think this is kind of part two of an original series that started with that building. I know there was a member of the marketing board that wanted to purchase that building, and somehow other conflicts of interest came up, and he decided just to withdraw. But it looks like there's always something going on with that building and its sale.
Yeah, and just to make sure for clarity, there was no conflict of interest. There was just a lot of things that were changing in that process and some strings and things like that. So, they, that interested party withdrew when the sands kept shifting, and so there was not a conflict of interest.
Initially with, well, Counselor Hensley?
So, I apologize. So, when it was announced about different board meetings, I guess it happened so long ago, I kind of forgot that I hadn't spoken about it. So, I was at the board meeting that was on June 8th, and it was discussed. There had been a couple of presentations prior to that, in the sense of what Early Iron could do if they got the building, but it never was, I would say, discussed seriously until the last meeting. And it did come up at the last meeting, and it was voted upon to recommend that the motorway would be given to Early Iron on a contingency where there'd be certain expectations within, and they were sort of still discussing that within the 10 years. within, and they were sort of still discussing that within the ten years. And when we left that meeting, it was that idea that it was going to go to the county commissioners. I believe their attorney was already starting to look at what it would look like. I believe I was looking it up. I think I have a meeting tomorrow on this, so I'll be able to get more information also tomorrow and see where we're at.
You're the liaison to the marketing district?
I am. And so what I can do is also, I will definitely present this information as far as what is being spoken throughout the city again with businesses, things like that, some of the concerns, to make sure had they considered some of this.
So am I understanding correctly in, in what you say that they want to gift this to the Early Iron folks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to look real quick right now. Hey.
I guess I had a-
It's next, so it's not, I apologize. I just wanted to be sure. So it's actually next, a week from tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Counselor Gregel?
I just had a question for Liz. I understood that this building used to belong to DRG and the marketing board.
It got bought out. The marketing board about a year, year and a half ago bought out DRG's portion of it. So it's owned straight out by the marketing board.
And the total amount that's already invested in this building, do we know? Somebody out there said something like close to about four hundred thousand dollars?
I believe approximately the amount that they bought out DRG for their half was around one hundred and eighty, one hundred and ninety. And that was what was remaining on the debt. So my, that estimation of four hundred thousand is probably pretty close. The other item I forgot to mention, but is definitely a city factor is unfortunately they, there seems to be this impression that even with it being a different owner, that somehow the parking regulations may not, that, that they might be more flexible on the parking regulations. I have shared with them that it doesn't matter who owns it, if it's the same use. We just finished our comp plan that shows a deficit of over two hundred parking spots and we cannot add to that in the downtown. And it doesn't matter who the owner is, that the parking requirements are what the parking requirements are. And so I think that's already being a discussion again, which is unfortunate because we've tried to be very clear on what the expectations and the codes are.
And I don't understand how this works, but how, and I know we're not involved in this, like you said, the city isn't, but how can you take monies from the marketing board and purchase something and then turn around and just give it away to somebody? Four hundred thousand dollars worth of money? Is, is that, is that even legal?
Well, don't ask me for a legal opinion without getting some chance to do some-
No, I'm not asking you, but I, and I know, like you say, we're not involved. But, but I don't under, I, I can't comprehend taking that kind of money from bedroom tax money, buying a building and then turn around and just give it to somebody and not even advertise it and say, hey, well, who else out there might want to even bid for it or, or have a possibility of, of doing something with it, you know?
Good question, Counselor Gregel. Anyone else? Counselor Hensley?
I will make sure when I'm at the meeting to relate because there has been discussion of how that building will be used if Early Iron was to get it. And there definitely was discussion about parking. And so I'll make it really clear that we did discuss it here and that we, at this point, stand firm with the parking requirements.
So I guess I have a question on that. And I have full faith in you, Ms. Hensley, but is it your role or your job to, to make those kinds of comments? Or is that the city manager's role? Or should we send a letter as a council together or? Because she's, she's just a liaison.
I have no problem making the comments. If you'd like something different, I'm, I don't mind doing it. I am not a voting member on this board, but I definitely, and they definitely encourage me and they enjoy when I am able to say things. I have obviously my set area where I can comment, but they've really opened it up that I can comment whenever.
So, so Counselor, what I could do is as city manager, provide a letter that specifically ties into what the code requirements are, what the expectation is. I know from the last time when, when the marketing board was thinking of doing a convention center, we had a lot of meetings with them. They wanted some flexibility. There were some areas we were willing to be flexible. And it wasn't based on if we liked them or not, it's if it was a reasonable request and, and we felt. But then there's other areas that we just did not feel like we could be flexible. So what I can do is pull some of that information together, present it in a letter that then Ms. Hensley can present to the board.
I think that'd be a great idea because it shows that we're all behind.
Just, just to be clear, I think that the city manager's saying the letter would address the issue about parking requirements. I mean, it's not going to address issues that Mr. Gregel was raising. I don't think that's the city's role.
Right, I agree with you. Counselor Gregel?
And I, and I was just, Counselor Vehill, I was just, as a county person ourselves, I was just asking, making a comment that he's right, we can't be involved in that. And she's not even a voting member there. And, but, you know, this, for something like this, I, it needs to be brought up. I hope the commissioners address it, you know, because it, it's something that, that's a lot of money.
And I agree with you, Mr. Gregel. I just caution how we approach it.
Sure.
As a, as a counselor member or as a citizen of the county?
And so to be clear, the letter will be focusing on the parking, where we can be flexible, what the codes are, those types of things. In regards to the concerns of the process and how this has been handled, we've been directing everyone to talk to, to Gigi. And, and my understanding is they are and that Gigi's appropriately keeping the commissioners informed of those concerns as well.
Ms. Heather, one of the concerns I had, and you, you say the city isn't involved, but the city is involved in, to the point that there are parking regulations as well as regulations specific to the building. Now, I know that the building itself had to be dealt with in such a manner that it would be brought up to code, that it was livable or that it was intended, up to the standard for which it is intended to be used. Now, those are city codes that they have to abide by, correct?
Yes, sir. And, and my understanding is part of the reason there's this gift and this, this expectation is they will use what limited resources they have to bring the building up to code. And so clearly, they're going to need to meet any fire suppression requirements, the safety of the walls from an engineering perspective, those types of things. My understanding is they're fully aware of what those are. And I haven't heard any inklings of wanting variances or anything. Really, the only inkling I've heard for variance requests is related to parking again.
Well, Heather, I think you know where I'm going with this, is that before a certificate of occupancy is granted, all those issues have to be mitigated.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I?
Thank you. Counselor Hensley?
They did, they were already starting to discuss what it would look like. They had some lockups. I guess within Early Iron, there's a lot of people that are involved in Early Iron that have a lot of these skills in regards to, I guess, construction and engineering and that type of stuff. So they did definitely know that was an issue and felt that they had a plan. Again, I'm, that's not an area of my expertise, but, so they could say whatever they, but it appeared from what they were talking about that they had a handle on some ways of how to, to make that work. And not trying to do anything behind the scenes, but really they had that idea of this is what we would do to this wall and this is what we would do to this, so.
And my impression is for those who have expressed concerns, it's been more on the process. I think almost anyone in the community wants to see that bring to the highest and best use possible in regards to that building. And they, the concerns, what I'm hearing is just more from a process, a transparency, a fairness, especially if it could be something that is a competition for some of the businesses that had to invest in brick and mortar and, and that type of thing. And so those are where a majority of those concerns are, are. And then, you know, clearly from a city perspective, we would just want to make sure that if there is a project that's done and really, you know, puts that into a good use, we're very supportive of that. We just need it to follow code. It's just that simple.
Thank you, Heather. And Counselor Hensley, totally appreciate your presence on that board as liaison. Not only is information coming to you, but information going to them as far as, you know, the city position. So we appreciate that and we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Any other staff announcements?
No, sir.
Thank you, Heather. We'll move on to the Liquor Licensing Authority Action Consent Calendar B. The consent calendar allows for multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar B contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight we have one item. It's the Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce Beat the Heat BBQ Special Events Permit, August fourth and fifth of 2017. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on Consent Calendar B?
One, one comment if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Gregel.
This, this group here, it, it hasn't come before council. They're not coming for monies to put this event on? Because they usually, they used to come for us, I guess for five thousand. I guess they're doing it by themselves now?
They have not approached us. I, I don't know if they have any intention of doing so.
Oh, okay. But maybe they, they, they're a good deal.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion consent down in B? If not, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to council comment. Who has a council comment? Counselor Stefano?
I would just like to announce that I'm going to take this opportunity to say that I'm going to run for reelection. I can't believe that four years have flew by this fast. It's an honor to serve for these past four years and I'm really contemplating on running again for reelection. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to staff for the CML conference and getting us up there and the great, it was a great conference this year. I think I learned a lot and got to work with a lot of different other communities. And so I really do appreciate that. And then thank you also for the fireworks last night and getting that all taken care of and making sure the town did not burn down. Appreciate it a lot. And everything that has been going on, I know there, people are having concerns in our community and I know they're being handled appropriately by our team. And it really is nice to have such a great team that I know is handling any concerns that come up from our community. So thank you for all that you guys do.
Wonderful. You know, I'd also like to make a comment on CML, you know. Counselor Gregel finally got his one hundred hour plaque. Congratulations, Charlie. That was great. And add to that, Counselor Hensley was elected to the executive board at CML for a two-year term, I believe. Congratulations, Liz. What a, what an honor. We, we thank you for that. That, that's great. Counselor Vehill?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have three quick things. Number one is kudos to the police and the fire department. I was also at the fireworks. I kind of parked out in the desert a little bit, but they were up and down, all over, taking care of things. So thank you, Chief and Chief, for, for doing that. I know July fourth is crazy for you guys. You all mentioned CML. I brought this up to Heather when we were there. I think you all should know that I would like to, from here on out, have like a, because we all, we all are excited about going to these little breakout sessions and we get information, but if, but we, I, I don't think we ever meet and talk about what we learned and how maybe we can apply this stuff to our city. So I would like to maybe have a, like a CML overview, review session as a work session and just bounce some ideas off each other. Maybe we can talk about that at the retreat. And then with election season coming up ever so slowly, I would just like to, to say publicly to everybody who's, who's going for seats, that we remain respectful to all and, and honor each other and, and let's not get into the mudslinging. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the entire staff for all of your participation and hard work in the parade event over the past weekend, events and the fireworks. So thank you all. You did a great job and it was a wonderful parade and fireworks.
Thank you. It was a wonderful weekend. A lot of participants, I mean, I hadn't seen that many children in a parade or participated in a parade or watching the parade in many, many years. A lot of great floats and it was, it was a great time. And the community just comes together when we have a parade. The only thing I heard was, was the band. And wow, well, we had a singing group, didn't we, Counselor Coleman? Thank you. All right, Counselor Hensley?
So echoing, obviously we've had a lot of activities and I also, boy, really appreciate being able to go to the CML conference. And I do appreciate everybody's support on council for me, for that executive board position. I'm honored to be able to represent the Valley, Alamosa as well as the Valley. The other thing, one event that hasn't been mentioned was Lids for Kids. I think that was another fantastic event. I mean, there's so many, so I'm not going to echo everything that's already been said. But that was an event that took true, everybody in the city of Alamosa coming together for that. And it is just a fantastic event. The kids love it. It's a great way for our community to get together. The weather was perfect for it. So again, thanks to the city for all their support on that event, which I think is, looks like it's starting to become an annual event, so it's real exciting.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Anyone else? So with that, we'll move on to our next order of business, which we have three executive sessions this evening. An executive session pursuant to, I'll just pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, four oh two dash four A, to discuss the potential purchase of the Solterra, Soltura solar plant providing power to the Alamosa family recreational center. Executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, four oh two four F for personnel matters, evaluation of our city attorney. And the executive session pursuant to CRS four dash six, four oh two four F for personnel matters, evaluation of our city manager. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we move into executive session to cover CRS twenty-four six dash four oh two four A and F for the purchase of Soltura as well as the two evaluations for staff.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the executive sessions? Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. After executive sessions, no further business will be discussed and the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.